... I'll test.
City of Apache Junction Works Session to order, roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi. Uh, Councilmember Rizzi, uh, will not be able to be here tonight. Uh, Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
Six members present, so you have a forum running?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The first four items, uh, can be done together, but you still need to read them out.
First four?
First, uh...
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So we'll start off with presentation and discussion regarding the establishment of a new single central business district. Should I read them now, or just do them as we come to them?
Um, you could read the other ones too, 'cause I think Elan could summarize it.
It all kind of goes together.
Yeah, we'll then move into presentation and discussion regarding the findings in support of establishing Old West Highway redevelopment area. And then move into presentation and discussion regarding adoption of a new redevelopment area plan for Old West Highway. And then lastly, discussion of the crossroads redevelopment area. Andy, Elan, you're gonna take the lead on all of these.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor, City Council, um, to go through the presentation today, I want to start with the first item that was on the agenda, which is a single central business district. A little bit of background on this, uh, single central business district boundaries need to lie entirely within a redevelopment area with an adopted redevelopment plan in place. Um, a portion of the current single central business district lies out of our existing, uh, redevelopment area boundaries outside of crossroads. Uh, as such, there's a need to redraw the single central business district boundaries to appropriately align. In terms of redevelopment areas, just some background, uh, nineteen ninety-six, uh, the crossroads redevelopment area that sits in our general downtown area, uh, was adopted, uh, via a couple of resolutions, and two thousand and thirteen, it was reaffirmed by city council. And, uh, so by creating this redevelopment area, the city's becomes eligible for community development block grants. Um, and these are funds that are able to be invested for a variety of different projects, including sidewalks, curb, gutter, uh, so on and so forth, street lighting. Uh, Arizona Department of Housing requires that redevelopment areas are reviewed and reaffirmed every five years, so the crossroad redevelopment area would be up for reaffirmation this year. Come back to some single central business district facts in regards. They need to be single and contiguous in a geographical area, uh, and designated by resolution of the governing body. The central business district is located entirely within a slum or blighted area that's established pursuant to Title thirty-six, Chapter twelve, Article three. And as well, the central business district is geographically compact and no larger than greater of five percent of the total land area or six hundred and forty acres. Um, so that's what we're, we're looking to do as we establish this, uh, single central business district. In addition, establishment of a new single central business district would enable the city to utilize, uh, government property lease excise tax as an incentive tool for development. G-plates, as they're called, uh, typically within economic development, uh, forum, are essentially Arizona's replacement of TIF. As you well know, we had a TIF district, uh, in the city, and we used those funds for quite a bit of redevelopment in our downtown and development, uh, public infrastructure, streets, and placemaking. That went away, uh, through legal action. And so the state of Arizona, most cities utilize G-plates as a way to reinvest dollars or to take dollars that are going into an area and allow them to be reinvested into the businesses and, and the properties that are there. Use of G-plate would require an economic development agreement to be adopted by council at that time, so it's a tool that if, if such, we would bring back to council and council would have to approve it at that time. Yes.
What's the difference between the TIF and the G-plate?
Okay, so, my, my understanding of TIF, TIF allowed, uh, tax dollars that were created within a designated area, um, to go back to the city for reinvestment back into that, that area. So for example, we, uh, had improvements on North Apache Trail. A portion of those dollars came from, uh, taxes that, that were derived from properties in that area and then reinvested back in for those improvements. G-plate, what it does is it allows for the city to approach two, two different ways. Originally, it was established where if a property was in, in a redevelopment area and a single central business district, that dollars, um, instead of a property tax, the city could, uh, could, um, could take a excise tax, and those dollars would go directly to the city, and then the city could use them, um, for whatever purposes in, in their funding and their budget. Uh, it also allows for tax abatements, and the idea on the abatement is it's very, the idea is that it's similar to the, the property taxes going back and being reinvested. So as an abatement, instead of the properties paying taxes on, on their property at that time, they could take that money and reinvest back into the business and, and the area. So it's, it's different, but it's, like I said, it's Arizona's replacement for TIF. Arizona is the only state out of the fifty states that doesn't have a TIF.
And there are entities that don't like G-plates too and are trying to end that as well.
Yeah, and so G-plate comes up each and every year, um, as a discussion with the state legislature in terms of, of what elements they want to keep, what elements they might want to get rid of, um, but it is definitely a tool that's understood and used by, by cities and developers, uh, throughout the state to bring forth new projects that wouldn't have otherwise happened in those areas.
Elan?
Yes.
Because we don't, the city itself doesn't have a property tax, what then would be the incentive for the development?
So the property tax that would be abated is not the city's portion of a property tax, as you said, we don't have one, it is the property taxes that would be collected in, in their entirety, whether it's the county or the special, special assessment districts, so any of the districts.
So it would require the county's approval?
It would require the city to notify all taxing districts that we're going to do it. It doesn't require their approval, but it requires notification from the city.
And it's only for a designated period of time?
Correct.
So the idea is this development wouldn't get there unless this happened, and after eight years, then they, it goes back on the tax rules.
And it's-
So that's, that's why it's a beneficial-
So is it, Elan, a situation where this government owns the land and leases it back?
Yes, so part of the process with G-plate essentially, so I'll, I'll give you a basic example, let's say that we had a multifamily developer or a retail, uh, so it's only allowable for properties that, that create some sort of, uh, lease income, okay? So let's say we had a property come in multifamily, for example, that multifamily developer, um, is looking in our area, but chooses because there's a gap that they can't get the project to pencil out. So the city then goes through, goes through a process of looking at, would an abatement work, uh, would that help this project to pencil out? You go through a process of evaluating all of those and ensuring that we're getting, ultimately, in the long run, we're getting more out of this project than we would be giving them through the abatement. That project then would enter into an economic development agreement. We would, they would essentially deed the land over to the city, the city would then either abate the taxes or, or, uh, do the G-plate, the lease excise tax, one or the other, for the period of up to eight years. At the end of the eight years, the property then goes back to the developer. The current, the project, whatever's on there is, is typically managed and, um, operated by whatever business or developer brought, brought it forth. But the underlying land is essentially deeded over so that it qualifies for G-plate.
When was the last, have we ever done that?
I don't believe we ever have as a city.
I'm aware.
Nope. And this, the map with all of the parcels that aren't contiguous to each other, is this the sixty-four acres?
Six hundred and four.
Six hundred and forty, sorry.
Yes, so I'm assuming that you're referring to the, uh, oh, I don't know if I can jump there.
Sorry.
I have a black and white, we can turn on.
While he's doing that, we did get close on one, and it was for the theater. What's the name of that theater, Brian?
Barley's.
Barley's.
So when Barley's was-
We did try, and we had a draft agreement, and they were gonna, I think, rent out part of the old Kmart. And we almost got there, but then they decided not to, uh, buy the land, or the city decided not to buy the land because they didn't want to come anymore.
Is Councilmember Evans, is this the map that you were referring to?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so this, as clear as, as it is on the screen right now, um, would represent the boundaries, would represent the boundaries for the redevelopment area that's, that we are suggesting, as well as the boundaries for the single central business district, so we will align them to match. Ultimately, um, part of this is, is part of the presentation, uh, going forward, ultimately, a, a portion of, of the crossroads redevelopment area is, is continued and included in the Old West Highway, but we look for, towards future development, and our primary commercial corridor runs down Old West Highway right now. So for, uh, for use of, of infill and future development, we felt like it would be, it would be proper at this time to consider, uh, extending what, what areas are included. All right, let me back to, uh, I'll see. Okay. So, I guess I didn't need to pop back, we want to go back. This is a doc cam, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna show you a couple maps. So, that didn't do it. Doc cam. All right, Matt. Oh, there we go. This, uh, this particular map is a map of our current single central business district that's adopted. On this right-hand side, we have, uh, Royal Palm. That area is currently outside, so Royal Palm, let me, uh, Royal Palm is here, our existing crossroads redevelopment area is in the red, so this area in here is outside of, is part of our single central business, uh, district that is outside of a current redevelopment area. And so this is part of what prompted us to start the process of looking at, um, uh, setting up a new single central business district and ultimately a new redevelopment area to encompass, uh, future, uh, future areas. Okay. So a few facts about redevelopment areas. Redevelopment areas are designated by the city council, uh, to be an area that's in need of revitalization. This, the city currently has two redevelopment areas, the Apache Trail redevelopment area and crossroads redevelopment area. Criteria for designating is that it is a blighted area, and what that means, it's an area where there's a predominance of properties experiencing any of the following: defective or inadequate street layouts, faulty lot layouts in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility, usefulness, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site or other improvements, uh, diversity of ownership, uh, tax or special assessen, assessment delinquencies, defective or unusual conditions of title, and improper or obsolete subdivision plating, and then existence of any conditions that endanger life or property by fire or other causes. Um, so, to be able to determine an area to be slum or blighted, we go through a, uh, an exercise where we go out and we look at the current infrastructures and existing properties and determine, um, what percentage or what, what amount is deteriorated or needs improvement. Uh, so our, our public works submitted some information. They keep records of all the, the roadways, um, and it's laid out by linear foot, you can find these on pages twenty-five to thirty-three of the redevelopment area plan. Forty percent of the roadways within the Old West Highway area, um, are deteriorated. Eighty-six percent of the streets either have, uh, no lighting or substandard lighting. Uh, sidewalks, about ninety percent substandard, deteriorated or missing. Um, just a note here, and I, I should correct what's on the screen, it, it's not an error, the total street, linear street is fifty-seven thousand seven thirty-four. The sidewalks show that they're seventy-one thousand eight hundred and forty-three feet, but those two numbers don't jive to say ninety percent. Essentially, there's sidewalks on more than one side of the street, so we have, we have, uh, a difference in distances here, but all in all, ninety percent of sidewalks are either deteriorated, substandard, or missing in this area. Residential, I have an asterisk on here, I, I want to make clear that as we talk about residential properties, we are not calling out any single property as being blighted in and of itself, we look at things as a whole. Um, and we do look at the individual properties to determine, to determine what, what standard they're in. So it's looked at in two different ways, uh, dollar values of approximate repairs that a property would require. Fifteen thousand or more, uh, puts, puts a property in a, uh, poor to replacement state. And then also age of property, if it's a mobile unit, anything fifteen years or older is also set in that same category. Commercial property, we look at faulty lot layouts, unsanitary or unsafe conditions or deteriorating site improvements. Those, those represent, so the, the residential is represented by the last three to four pages on the redevelopment, redevelopment area plan. And they are called out by parcel, not by unit, per se. Okay, so why are we doing this? Designating the, uh, the area redevelopment area helps reduce blight, will help to reduce blight and spur development, and adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized structures. Benefits, establishing a redevelopment area, uh, is necessary to open our economic development tool, toolbox, it adds tools like G-plate, but additionally, it makes available use of certain funds like CDBG and other grant funds to be able to, uh, to invest in improvements. So the area boundaries are outlined in red, and the central area in there, there's a yellow crosshatching that represents the downtown core district, which is called out in the plan. So generally speaking, the, the objectives called out in this plan are directed towards incentivizing growth through a few different means: removal of slum and blight, land assembly, quality housing, adequate public services, facilities, and infrastructure, and utilization of CDBG funding, G-plate, or other redevelopment tools and resources that are not otherwise available without both the S, the S, the single central business district and RDA in place. So, uh, per state statute, we're required to notify the public that, uh, that these things are being brought to council's attention and, and for approval. These notifications happened, uh, through publications in the newspaper on April fourth and April eleventh in the Arizona Republic, and staff mailed notices out to all property owners on the twenty-ninth of March. We received some feedback from, uh, six members of the community. Primary questions that they asked, uh, were focused on zoning changes and tax increases. Uh, the simple answer to that is within this plan, there are no zoning changes that are called out specifically. Any zoning changes would happen as, as per normal, uh, process, and there are no tax increases that are called out in this document as a whole. So, moving forward, to be able to establish the Old West Highway redevelopment area, we will look at and need to rescind the crossroads redevelopment area. And as I stated earlier, we're gonna add in more parcels for, for future growth and development of, of Old West Highway. There was a P and Z public, uh, planning and zoning hearing held on March thirteenth. It was approved unanimously by the committee, or commission. Uh, they did add a couple recommendations. Those were, start with the Old Bash's site and fund adequate code enforcement staff. And so those were the recommendations, uh, to bring forth to city council to consider.
What did they mean by start with the Old Bash's?
They felt like that would be the best place for the city to, to focus efforts. As I explained to them, this document doesn't, doesn't call out action on specific properties. What it does, it opens up our ability to work with property owners, and I'll use Flatiron Park as a, a great example. There were a couple buildings, uh, old apartment buildings that were there that we, in, in, in partnership with the property owner, were able to, um, bring down and remove tho, those blighted structures.
Elan, if I just, can I clarify one thing?
Yeah.
Uh, what the Planning and Zoning Commission looked at was what's called a redevelopment plan, and it's the plan that has to go before council at one point. So the plan is in your packet, and that is what, that's one of the things they, they talked about, um, with the Old Bash's site, when they looked at the plan. So I just wanted to, I didn't, I don't think you called the plan yet.
No, no.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, so there's, there's a total of five documents that you guys, uh, the council has to look at. One of them is, is redevelopment plan, so it's part of, when we adopt redevelopment area, we also need to adopt a redevelopment plan for that area. The plan is what calls out those, those different actions that we can take or different means whereby we can help, uh, incent or, um, move towards redevelopment in this, in this redevelopment area. So requested action, we're gonna, I'll be bringing this back to a public hearing on May first, um, for, uh, consideration of adoption and of the four resolutions. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
I have a couple. Joel, on the Resolution eighteen dash twelve, can you explain, um, the one whereas says diversity of ownership? Can you explain to me what that exactly means? It's like midway, in the middle of the page. Page one of four of the resolution. Which item are you on? Oh, I'm in eighteen dash two.
Number two.
Well, 'cause I'm looking at all of them together.
Yeah, what that, that's language that is taken directly from, uh, I believe, ARS thirty-six dash fourteen seventy-nine, and diversity of ownership, what that means is there's, there's different owners, there's a lot of owners regarding, uh, certain parcels. So it's not easy to assemble into one development. A good example, really good example, actually, was where the fries is located. Uh, that was called Apache Junction Plaza, part of it, and there was, uh, boy, I forget how many owners, and that was definitely diversity of ownership, there were too many owners, and that's why it sat for years and years. I think the lots were two thousand square feet, and it was go, originally gonna be either a, Kathy could help me, but I think it was gonna be a, a mobile home, uh, a, I think subdivision, or some kind of commercial area.
It was part of a proposed development when there was like, um, Winter League baseball team out here, and it was expected to just continue going.
So it refers to the number of parcels, not ownership directly of the parcel, the number of people in ownership?
Yes, the number, it's different owners.
Not directly to the owners.
Well, I think it's the, they're different owners than, 'cause I think there, I forget how many parcels there were, there was like forty or fifty, but I can't remember, and there was just too many, and each one had, had a different owner.
Right, no, and I understand the need to combine parcels, and especially along Old West, because we do have commercial and residential, right, abutting each other.
Bless you.
And having this redevelopment area, does that allow us to do a overlay type zoning?
So-
That would-
So as far as an overlay type zoning, eh, to some degree, um...
Because of the residential that goes all the way up to Old West and everything's kind of in triangle shapes.
I think you could do an overlay anyway.
Yeah.
But, but what this, because it's in the, it'd be in the downtown area and it'd be a redevelopment area, if the city were to purchase a lot, for example, uh, the sale of the lot would not have to be market value, it could be fair value, which is less than market value. That was another, uh, good thing that would happen with the redevelopment powers. You wouldn't have to take it to, um, a vote of the people either. So there are other benefits. But when the fries decided to get that land, they had to somehow buy each lot from individual people, and they did it, and it took years to do it, but they did it. And so that's what, that helped being in a redevelopment area, actually.
Okay.
Any more questions, Robin?
I just, clarification here.
Yeah.
So basically, what we're doing is rescinding crossroads, expanding that redevelopment area, and now calling it Old West Redevelopment Area.
Yes.
So that, that's what those four items are.
Yes, yeah, and essentially, the, the language in the Old West Highway Redevelopment Area Plan is very similar to the language of the crossroads redevelopment area, and so we're, we're looking to expand that out.
And you're shifting the single central business district a little bit?
Yes.
Also.
Okay.
If you're done, thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you, Elan, and know it's a big work and something we've been working a long time. It gives you another, the best you can have in terms of economic, another arrow in the quiver for economic development, the few that we have.
Presentation and discussion on four ASU Project Cities Fall two thousand seventeen semester projects entitled Sustainability in Solid Waste, Positively AJ, Off-Leash Dog Park, Understanding Homelessness, and the Land Use Planning Report from the Land Escape Design Studio. And I was assured by all of the council members that they read every page in here three times, so, three times. So they're, we're all prepared.
And Larry can talk as fast as Rudy.
And Elan, perhaps. Well, that's great that you read all that, I'm very impressed. Hi, Larry Kirch, uh, Director of Development Services, mayor, council. Uh, it's my pleasure, if you will, to talk about these four projects, actually, uh, Matt McNulty's gonna come and talk about, uh, Positively AJ, uh, Liz Langenbach's gonna come and talk about the Dog Park, and Heather Patel's gonna talk about Understanding Homelessness, I'm gonna come back and wrap up with the land use planning one. So there's hopefully four fairly quick, uh, presentations here. So if you recall, we entered into an MOU with Arizona State University as the pilot city for what they're calling Project Cities. There are thirty now, it was twenty-seven last year, there are thirty universities around the country doing, uh, partnerships with municipalities. We went to a conference last week in Madison, Wisconsin, there's five now in Sub-Saharan Africa that are adopting this model of universities working with cities, there's one in Brazil, they're talking about expanding this to about thirty more university and city partnerships using the power of the university and working on projects that cities want to be worked on collaboratively. So that's exciting. So Ann is here, if you have any questions. Um, the projects really were broken down, the four projects, the land use planning class was a little bit different, they were trying to incorporate all four of the other projects into this land use planning component. So I'm gonna talk about, uh, solid waste, and you've seen the covers of these reports for the audience, these are the covers of each of the, the sections. Uh, if you recall, a little history on this, last year, uh, I made a presentation, the students did a, a class in the fall, but we presented it in the summer. Uh, they did a kind of a peer analysis of solid waste in Fountain Hills, Buckeye, and Queen Creek, and there were recommendations in that document, some of those are kind of, uh, repeated here, um, so I just wanted to let you know that, um, we're kind of building on that previous work that was done in the fall of, uh, twenty sixteen, now we have the classes. So this semester, or this last fall, there were two classes, one through the Polytech School over by the airport, Gateway, uh, that was Sustainable Solid Waste Management Class, and then we had a, uh, Public Affairs Class, folks working on their master's project. So two different classes looking at the solid waste issue in AJ from one kind of a policy public administration perspective, and one really from an environmental, um, management resource.
Larry, just, just out of curiosity, as these students graduate or transfer, their new ones are coming on at all time, and they get briefed and they get- their new ones are coming on at all time, and they get briefed and they get brought up to speed on what's already been done? And how is that working, do you know?
Well, what we're doing is, we have, now everybody has a Dropbox or a Google Drive or whatever. The, the work that has been done previous semester, that was downloaded to the students. So, they are aware of previous project. This is the only one really on solid waste that actually had another class involved previously. But we are, uh, the classes all, at the very end, I'll show you, we're working on four projects this semester. Those four classes have the information, if it's relevant, to the projects they're working on. So, we are trying to keep the new students so they're not repeating, uh, research that's already been done. So, the, there were two aspects of the solid waste management class. One was, uh, complaint review. Essentially, solid waste was the most reported complaint in both the county and the city. There were seventy-five hundred complaints, I think fifteen thousand complaints. So, we got code cases, reports of both in Pennell County, the students did, we gave it to them. But there were fifteen thousand complaints, half of them related to solid waste. It was hard to group these into specifically solid waste because of the categories that you can complain about. So, seventy-five percent of the complaints were for outside storage. The students learned that the complaints, you'd think that they would pick up in the winter. It seemed to be that way in the county, but not necessarily in the city. There didn't seem to be any decrease or relationship between the free dump week and when complaints, like complaints would go down like the day or the week after, months after, uh, free dump week. So, um, the other thing they found was that, they also reviewed kind of our complaint system, how Maricopa County, Mesa, Avondale, Buckeye, their complaint system, most of it's online. They found some easier to navigate than others. Uh, they liked the way AD EQ worked, they liked Mesa's, I'll go through a little bit of those. For our case, they, we basically work on the home webpage there for Request Tracker. So, it does come, I think, with Civic Plus, the software. So, other cities have that, they think there's a way to kind of reorganize some of those categories, make them a little more topical, and that way you can correlate code cases with the actual complaint if it gets filed. 'Cause you can file a complaint on our twenty-four hour hotline, you can come in and fill out a piece of paper, you can go to Request Tracker. So, to do it better, if we wanna analyze in the future, if we could create categories on our complaint system that were clearly related to a code rather than kind of generalized categories, that was one of their, uh, observations. The other thing is Mesa can, you can pull up a map and you can see a pin map of all the complaints. We don't have that functionality. And we have talked about it in the past where you can upload a photo and say, see, here's the pile of trash I was talking about, and it, you can associate with a, a pin map or generalized area. So, again, they looked at our complaint system and some general observations. The other thing, they split the class in half. So, there was like ten or so students working on kind of how we manage solid waste. Other part of the class looked at what are the environmental health aspects. So, again, without a solid waste management system, you deal with odors, you deal with mosquitoes and rats. Air pollution, again, I thought it was surprising, maybe not to some folks, that there were a hundred cases. People are openly burning trash, which I thought went away in the seventies, but people are still burning trash, uh, in the community. And one example, so they got fire, data from the fire district as well. So, there were, back in September of twenty seventeen, there were five solid waste fires in the city of Apache Junction. So, open burning is not a good thing, but it's occurring. So, this half of the class, we're looking at the environmental aspects of solid waste management and a lack of a system, how that affects all these factors. Then, so their report recommendations that they made, um, and this really came about last, uh, fall's class as well, a year ago, is that the city ought to have a mandatory, um, solid waste and recycling program. That we currently have containers are to be required, but a typical system would have a cart. It could be of a size, it could be thirty, sixty, ninety gallons. And there were some conflicting each, uh, this part of the class said we should, um, have more free dump weeks. The other class thought we should, uh, the pol- public policy folks thought we should eliminate them. So, uh, again, two different classes coming at it. Uh, quarterly bulk pickup, again, just being at, on a Saturday, if you went to the neighborhood cleanup, some of you were there, we filled up seven dumpsters in about three hours. So, we know that there probably is a need for these quarterly pickups, we just haven't been able to afford it after the recession through the city budgets. Again, existing codes, we should strictly enforce what we have on illegal dumping, outdoor storage, et cetera. Strictly enforce open burning and educate residents on the prohibition of open burning. Prioritize community education. So, part of this whole report talks about how do we educate folks on, how do we maybe help folks start with backyard composting? What, what about, if you have a vehicle that's, um, abandoned, you know, it's gonna leak radiator fluid, it's gonna leak oil, things like that. So, they were looking at, you know, or if you do illegal dumping, um, or leave a, leave a RV like we've had, left on somebody's lot, those things cause environmental contamination. So, they, I can't go through all the recommendations, so those are, uh, on community education, they had about nine recommendations, and they're all in the voluminous report. Online complaint system, I kind of alluded to this, they had about twelve recommendations on how they looked at other communities' complaint system. I'm hoping this new system that we're talking about for permitting that, uh, we presented a few weeks ago also would have a more robust, uh, online tracking system. A lot of places, you can upload the photo, you get a automatic receipt that says we received it, how we're processing that particular complaint. So, again, there are a lot of recommendations in there. The Public Affairs Class, there were five students, they each kind of wrote their kind of, um, master's paper on this. That their observation, there was one person that did a survey, they had twenty-two respondents, that's doesn't give you a large audience, but at least it does give you some input feedback. That there are residents who some rely on the free dump week and there, but by and large, folks don't rely on the free dump week to take three months' worth of trash. Uh, there are some folks that continue to store it and don't use free dump week, however. Uh, again, small survey, uh, population, but the folks that they talked to weren't generally opposed to having someone come and haul their trash away for them. Uh, and again, that same class has, uh, recommendation for mandating, uh, weekly collection. So, they're both suggesting, I think, a major overhaul of changing how we do business with regard to solid waste, is that we shouldn't mandate it. There are various ways to accomplish this, there are, and throughout those reports, they do that. They looked at partnering perhaps with another community. But the notion that, um, we have three companies now, some provide recycling, some don't. There's a total of five different trucks that go down these streets and the environmental impacts and the impacts to the city's roadways on having five different, uh, three companies, five trucks, and then, uh, folks hauling themselves and what leaks out of the back of the truck. Again, they also recommend a very, uh, let's start educating the populace if we're gonna start moving with solid waste and recycling, what can you can recycle, when you have to do it, what kind of container, et cetera. So, uh, and again, the whole thing about the complaint system, so that's in a nutshell. And I think, based on this, that at some point in the near future, that, um, council ought to be in a position to give us some direction. What that is, um, that'll be for you folks to decide. Typically, what the other communities in the first report did, they, um, put out a request for proposals. There is options, when you do a public bid, you can have options for, um, how many days a week or what days of the week, set up your zones, uh, how much recycling, is it, there, are there à la carte services? Like, um, you know, refrigerators, white goods, how do you handle those? All of that, I think, can be flushed out with an RFP. In concert with that, there's always another piece, which is an ordinance. So, currently, we have an ordinance that, uh, in Chapter Nine that says how we do solid waste. That obviously would have to be dovetailed with any type of, uh, reforms that we make with solid waste collection. So, those would happen in my mind simultaneously.
Larry, you think they could go simultaneous at the same time?
I think you have to, I think you, if you roll out a system and we do have a single hauler, if that's what it ends up being, then that's a bidding process, everybody gets to bid on it. And then, um, you can set up, maybe that all happens, uh, on Tuesdays and Thursdays still in different parts of the city. But I think it gets, you have to figure out a way through the ordinance of who can be a hauler. Are you gonna still allow private hauling? And then, any penalties if you're not following the system? So, if you don't, most cities, everybody gets a can. They can maybe pick the size of the can, there are other systems too. Uh, some cities go as what they call pay as you throw. So, it's kind of based on the volume. Um, those are a little bit more complicated than, and most of those you don't see in Ar- in Arizona. Another good source that they looked at here are the best practices. So, MAG has a solid waste committee, and I don't know if you've all seen the report, but every few years, they put out a report on solid waste best practices. So, I think a lot of what you see here, what cities have done in terms of, you know, a single hauler, what they're doing with, um, um, household hazardous waste, what they're doing with large item bulk collection, and then, white goods, how they do that, um, there's a lot of examples already out there. And again, I, the first paper last fall looked at peer, what they thought were peer communities and how they're handling it. So, um, I don't think it'd be a stretch to say that we're probably the only city in the metro area that doesn't mandate solid waste collection. I think I can safely say that. I think the only other city we found maybe was, um, Morana, because they had a landfill there. But, uh, I think we're the only city out of our, all our peers that don't have a solid waste program.
So, this is a break here between the...
Speechless, you left them speechless, this is...
You did a great job.
Are you gonna...
Job to the students, I mean, they did the work, um, ASU assembled all these, uh, which was a lot of work, uh, to take all these classes and synthesize it into a report. So, I think you'll see that throughout, that, uh, they did a nice job of taking lots of information and try to, uh, synthesize it into an executive summary and then a couple of key recommendations.
So, are you gonna transition into the other three, or are you gonna hand them off?
Yes, I'm planning on, and I'm planning on having Matt McNulty come out from behind the curtain and, uh, talk about the two classes that worked on Positively AJ. Unless he's already here. Come out, there he is, speak of Matt.
Hold the door, I'll run back, I'll switch that on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Vice Mayor, how are you today?
Good, good.
Good. Okay, Positively AJ, now, Positively AJ was a great project for, uh, myself, and I know Al had a lot of fun. And, um, welcome, Ann, thank you for coming, she's back there. It started out as a, an attempt to do some pretty heavy research about our brand as it stands right now. What are people really thinking? And after the first initial meetings with, um, ASU and Dr. Evan, it, realistically, it's not something that could be done in just one semester. So, we said, okay, well, what, what can we realistically do? And so, working with Dr. Evan, and, um, he basically approached it as, hey, let's do a tourism, uh, type of plan with a strength and weaknesses study, so a SWAT. Said, okay, that sounds great. And then, about a week into it, I heard from a, Dr. Batova, who was, who, she's over at the Polytech and she does unit, user interface and, uh, user interaction for the website. So, we were able to talk her into helping us out by taking a look, uh, basically at the visitor section only of our website. And we got some very good information from her as well as we did from Dr. Jordan. Okay, so, I'm gonna start with the user experience. So, again, they focused just on the visitors' page. And what they did was, they used some very typical, um, user testing, they used live people, obviously, but they also, uh, approached it from, um, kind of an AI situation by using, uh, creating user bios and personalities, like what would, uh, a female aged fifty-five to sixty-five who wanted to find a hotel or a restaurant in town or things for kids to do? How hard was it for her or for him to find that information on our website? Uh, they also took a opportunity to compare us with some, uh, other city websites of, of similar size, as you see there, uh, the Town of Morana, Wake Forest, Sierra Vista, Sierra Vista. The info, as it came down, was actually really, really interesting, and I think it's gonna apply not just to the visitor's site, um, but it'll also apply to the website as a whole. It was just a really interesting approach that I had never gone too deep into, uh, working here for the many years I have. It was, it was kind of a city website geared toward our services and geared toward finding information about those services. Okay, so, what they found out is that it was, it was a little bit difficult to get, first of all, to get to the visitors' page, even though it's kind of on the front there. People generally have a goal when they go to the website and they, they wanna find it faster. They could not find information too readily on hotels or food or, uh, different activities related or unrelated to the city, they just didn't happen very well. So, one of the things they did was this, um, it's kind of a, it's kind of a game called card sorting, and it allows people to construct this, the website's information architecture, like the top level links, like we have with visitors, adopt a pet. And they, they can write their own and kind of organize the data from their kind of instincts or their heuristics. Uh, and they found out that it's, you know, our city website is based upon the structure of the city. The architecture of the website's based upon departments, which isn't intuitive to most people, especially if they come with a specific goal in mind. In this case, they were looking for visitor information, hotels, restaurants, activities. There's not a lot there. As we get to the recommendations for the user experience, they, they did recommend improving the visual impact. And I, and I asked them about that because we do have a pretty good visual impact, but they said, well, less is more. So, that kind of left me with no information at all, so, I'm still working on that one. Um, one of the ideas was also to be more specific on the visitors' page itself, to put hotel information on there, um, go ahead and put pictures on there, don't just link out to the videos, 'cause we have a nice list of things to do, but they link out to other websites. Or, they basically link to a PDF, which, um, over the last two years, our, the number of visitors to our website, for whatever reason, on mobile has increased far beyond our, our, at this point, our PC. So, we're getting way more mobile use. So, you can't have these huge files there and waste their time because they're just not going to. One, it may cost them because their data plans may be really terrible. So, that was some really good information there for me, 'cause I tend to forget that. 'Cause I sit, or I'm on the desk or I'm back there, and I'm on a desktop like all the time looking at the city's website. So, um, that was really good information for myself. Now, their, uh, recommendations are pretty solid. I'm gonna go with, uh, the one that I'm gonna recommend that we do is to, um, off-site, our tourism and web presence. And we already have something that Alana's been doing with Visit AJ, which is its own look, its own feel, and it is centric to visitors. And that's one of the recommendations I'm gonna be talking with Bryant and Matt and Al about, is to say, hey, the link on our page could just go right to Visit AJ. And the hotel information's there, the events are there, the videos that we've been producing are there. And of course, all the links to the social media are there as well. Um, one of the other things was also to work with our staff on not just that aspect of it, but their own department websites and looking at that architecture a little closer. So, that was kind of an offshoot, not necessarily directly related to tourism, but just user, how useful the website can be. Uh, and it's also something to keep in mind when we come to fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and we go out for, um, a new website, 'cause it'll be due by then. It's, it's really due this year, but, um, I'd rather wait until the following year and get some more research done. Okay, now, the next one, of course, was the tourism planning. And real briefly, some of the strength, as you can read there, close proximity, um, to the mountain, to the desert, to the, the rural, um, places and activities that people are looking for. What I really got out of this, um, study was that we are on, according to their research, and that we're on the right course. Um, we've been using the, the mountain as a backdrop for a lot of our art, for our videos, our ruralness, our character is built into our advertising, be it digital or be it analog, meaning digital, I mean, print or newspaper ads in the magazines. So, we're, we're capitalizing on that particular part. In, in the report, it was very interesting to see that some of them thought we had, we were building a brand, uh, it just wasn't there yet. So, it is starting to, I guess, see the light of day in people's minds out there that, you know, this is a place to come for some great recreational opportunities. Not just so much a pass-through anymore to those, but as your starter, your gateway, as they mentioned at near the end of the... as they mentioned near the end of the report. One thing that was interesting, I know some of you participated in the face-to-face focus groups with them, is that they apparently, and they talked about this with me a couple of times when I visited their presentations at ASU, was that there's a lot of folks in towns that don't care for any of this. They do not care for any of this. They do not care for growth in that aspect. So that's one of the threats they put down, and they thought it was probably one of the most interesting ones, at the very least, to try to get through. Okay, so, also, it really has come to our attention, over the last two years, the increased use of social media. And we've just recently, I think over the last year and a half, maybe, has started doing some paid advertising. I mean, we're using it to a good extent. Some of our organic reach is pretty phenomenal. That means stuff we've just posted, for example, from the rodeo or from the Fourth of July, got so many, a lot of shares, reached very far, 6,000 and above, which is a pretty good number for non-paid, and knowing how Facebook changes, all of that. It's pay-to-play for Facebook these days, so getting that out there is important. And we need to continue to collect the data and look at maybe some of those, if not revisiting Buxton, something similar. And the youth market. Of course, these young people at the school were very much pro Instagram, Snapchat, of putting that stuff out there, little snippets, short little treats of what you can do out here and some of the activities. By the way, before you get to your questions, there's two videos out there I discovered for the tourism presentation that some, I know, most of you were there, I think, at ASU. They recorded that, put that out there on Vimeo, and also the interface design is out there with Dr. Batova. Any questions?
Have we seen these videos? Who put these together?
This is ASU. They recorded them during the formal presentations at the Memorial Union.
Okay, where do we find those, if someone wants to search this? It's obviously not YouTube. You'd have to go where?
You'd go to Vimeo. I mean, I can share these, the slide with you through your emails, and you can share those. That's it.
Please.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you can watch those and see your back of your heads. It's really cool. Any other questions?
Looks like no.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's up next, Larry?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We saw this as a great opportunity to bring the topic to the forefront of our discussion again. Dogs are more and more a part of our families, and certainly, we see them a lot in our parks and a lot of our other facilities. And so, we are very excited to be able to work with ASU on just reinvigorating the concept of an off-leash dog park. Before getting into our presentation, I just want to mention, though, that all of our parks and many of our facilities are already very pet-friendly. So we have dog waste stations in all of them. As long as they're on a leash, families can bring their dogs to a lot of our facilities. What this report is gonna really work on is that off-leash dog park, where somebody could let them off of their leash and they can play. Myself and Nick Blake, our park superintendent, were the leads for this project. And we worked also with the 509 Public Affairs Capstone Group. There were seven students in Professor Goggins's class that chose the dog park, off-leash dog park, as their master's degree in their independent report. Say that again?
Put your mic down a little.
I'm too loud?
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Is that good?
Better.
All right.
Daughter of a coach.
Yeah. I could probably just do this without using the microphone and be plenty loud. Each of the seven students, they chose many different tools to evaluate some different concepts, as well as they looked at different components of the whole dog park topic. So we kind of, throughout this wonderfully large presentation that I know all of you read, there's only a snippet of, there's only a certain selection of those projects, but it does show some of the different tools that they used in evaluating dog parks. The three major evaluation components that all the projects, in one way or another, looked at was one location. So right now, we have three sites that we've actually looked at over the years. Prospector Park and Silly Mountain, those were two designs in our master plan that were actually adopted by council in 2009. Prospector Park actually has construction documents sitting on the shelf. That's a big chunk of money that was already spent on creating those documents. So that is something that's already completed for that project. Silly Mountain just has the adopted design. And then recently, Jeff Bell did work with J2R Design Consultants in just developing a conceptual design for the county retention basin that we are currently maintaining for the county, as just an idea so that we could look at maybe a smaller version, something that we might be able to afford a little bit, a little bit better. And so we have three kind of designed ideas out there that the groups looked at, as well as other areas in the community. The second idea, the second concept they looked at was the types of amenities a dog park should have. And the third, which is very important to us, is funding sources. So really, the thing that is holding this project stagnant is there's not enough money. The two big projects are in the three and a half to four and a half million dollar ballpark. That was in 2009, so it might be more expensive now. The smaller project, it's about $650,000, a little bit more doable, but something that we still would need to find funding sources. So several of the students looked at, you know, what kinds of grants are out there? What kinds of public-private partnerships could be looked at, some other ways for funding. The top recommendation, so I really just selected the most common, the one thing that kind of stood out out of all of their projects. So in location, many of the groups said that due to financial constraints, that we should consider constructing the smaller version, or a smaller portion of one of the versions that's already out there, as well as to use some of the basic amenities. So the projects that we identified or the ones that were adopted are, you know, all the bells and whistles. So what are some of the basic amenities that we could use? And that was one of the recommendations for location when we selected it. So truly, the county retention area is the one that kind of fits into that category, is our trial period, or another area similarly sized. The second major recommendation was under amenities. And I'd just like to say that, so Nick and Jeff Bell, our former director, did a lot of research on dog parks many years ago. And it's really nice to see that a lot of the same things that were important amenities at that time are still important amenities today. So I think that was very good, because now they've kind of come full circle. Dog parks are in many, many areas, and so we know the things that we heard then have stuck, and that they've lasted, and that's what we want to look at. So a minimum of an acre with turf, five-foot fencing, and then separate areas for large, small breeds of dogs. Those are the major, like, you have to have. And then shade, seating, water features were the next top amenities. And so as we look at our locations, that those will be important things to make sure that we can include. There's a lot of other very important amenities that were listed that would certainly be incorporated, but these were some of the big-ticket things and the main items we need to consider. The third final recommendation for funding, so out of all the things that some of the students looked at, the most common funding source for local dog parks in valley cities is what we already probably know, municipal bonds and capital improvement projects. So there's not enough grant, so there's not enough large grant dollars out there. There might be a lot of small grant dollars that you could pull together and help create something. There are, many of the projects looked at public-private, private-public partnerships, as well as corporate partnerships. But just like with Flatiron, it's really, you have to have a certain amount of money there to be able to make promises and build on to get other people to want to donate that money. So what all of the valley cities, how they've designed their parks, was including municipal bonds. I wanted to mention that one of the groups, and I saw this a lot in some of the summaries, if you read the summary, mentioned using unused money from projects that were either backlog or that just didn't, you know, Parks and Recreation doesn't have any of those. We don't have some great big capital project out there that we postponed. I mean, if we postponed, it's because we didn't have money for it. So there's not like extra money laying around that we could gather up and do for the dog park. But I appreciate the thought, and there were a lot of really wonderful ideas in there. So my final wrap-up is just what are kind of our next steps? So what they did mention throughout it is that this was just a starting point. So they did a lot of research and some different things, but it was just scraping the tip of the iceberg. They recommend that we further discuss with the council and other potential partners on funding and available sites. So at some point, we want to bring it back to all of you and look at, is our next step to start talking to the county? We haven't really had that conversation. They've never voted on whether or not we can use that area.
So you're saying now is not the time to discuss this? You would have, you'd want to come back?
No, today's a great discussion day, but I think we would, if I heard from you guys that you wanted us to bring it back for direction to staff, and I think once we start talking about it here, when I hear your guys' discussion items, then that'll help us to know, you know, kind of what the direction of the council is. So yes, that's part of the next steps, but they are recommending that, obviously, we reach out to those other stakeholders to help us to make, to see what kind of funding and what kind of resources we have. So that's number one. And then number two is while they did reach out to community members, they weren't able to reach a whole lot of folks. And so we really need to have the conversation with our own community about what are the true needs. So we know some of those big needs, but where should it be? Where do our residents want it to be? And there were a lot of suggestions in the report about where we located it. Many say it needs to be by residential areas, you know, where there's more people that can walk to it and that don't maybe have the open space for their dogs. Other students suggested that it should be at Silly Mountain, because it is more regionally located and can attract more people. But unfortunately, that location is starting from scratch. It has no infrastructure whatsoever. So it'd be the toughest one for us to build. Prospector Park is already, has some infrastructure around it. It already has a lot of people coming towards it. It is costly, but it has designs on the shelf. So looking at those three things, I think us having another discussion on that. One of the suggestions was to create a small focus group. So we would, after we talked today, is maybe that is something that we would want to do as our next steps. We have not put it into our budget for next year. You'll be looking at those soon, but it's not in there. What should be our next steps, though, in this next year, so that we can move this project forward, I think, is it? And that leads me to your questions and discussion.
I would definitely want to bring this back for direction to staff to talk about the things you just talked about. I've got a whole page on this. I mean, people have been waiting for this for a long time. And like you said, the question's there. I mean, Silly Mountain would be ideal, because some folks in the neighboring communities would help if it was there. Would they help in the other areas? Fundraising-wise, I know that one of the golf resorts out there raised $50,000 in one day, which then went to our paws and claws. I mean, if they can do that in one day, just think of what the whole community could do if we all got behind us to raise. It could go quicker than we think. And then people would have ownership of it, because it would be ours, because they built it. And also, those big numbers, let's not let them scare us, because how have we built all of our parks? You don't build them instantly. You put in grass, then you put in fences. I mean, we're doing the same thing with Flatiron right now. It's not done. We do what we can with what we can and get it started. So these are all things that I would, I would want to talk about when we do get it on direction to staff and then possibly form in a focus group. What would be the first, what would come first, the turf, the fence?
So for which one, if you're looking at Silly Mountain, we don't have water there.
Yeah, but I mean, that's-
So that's a major, major discussion point.
And you couldn't dig in water there either. I mean, it's solid rock there.
You know, and just to kind of talk about that particular location, because it, I mean, we have some really nice designs for all of those, and I know those things were considered. But it is also on BLM land, as well as Prospector Park. And we are struggling right now just to keep those RNPP leases and get them renewed. And so I think one of the things that I've heard from many, many of you council members is just that we want to be careful about what we put on land that isn't ours, because we don't have a lot of guarantee of keeping it. And so I think as we work through the BLM stuff, that'll help us. But then when we talk about some of that infrastructure stuff, so no, we don't have to do everything immediately. Absolutely, our parks have been phased. But unfortunately, some of the biggest stuff that happens in the very first phase is laying of the groundwork. So at Flatiron, we had to put in sleeves for anything that we were gonna be adding later, all the conduit, all the things, all that had to be done first. And so that made the first phase the most expensive phase, because we needed to have it lay the groundwork for what we were gonna add on later. And that is some of the challenges for some of these groups. But in a focus group, if we were to sit down and talk about what that looks like, I think the first step would be to share with all of you, whether it's at a council meeting, or whether we have these, you know, small focus groups or a small committee, I think it'd be to share what each of those costs really are, so that everybody had an understanding of what has to be done first. So if we don't have any water, how will we get water to the site? And what is the reality of that happening soon? And it might be no problem at all, but I think until we sat down and shared each of those things, that's gonna help us to make some good decisions. Talking with the county about whether or not, so I mean, this was a conceptual idea. It was talked about with a couple of county officials. But we don't want to make, obviously, any promises until we know that that was even desirable. And so I think those groups, I agree, I would love for us to start having those next conversations, really-
Well, if we don't have them, I mean, it may not even be this council that does it, but let's get this council starting about it. Maybe two or three councils from now, they can actually make this happen.
Right.
Or maybe things fall into place and it happens, starts happening next year. So I would say definitely, let's get it on to a-
I would strongly recommend to any kind of group, we also add, we make sure we have them study out maintenance costs as well. Cost to maintain, cost, we are struggling to get our own Prospector where we want it. Supervision shadows, I just took a tour that I'm down with my daughter watching tennis. And there's some work that needs to be done within our two parks that we've got.
But this is also an opportunity. There's a lot of people and groups that would maintain it themselves. I mean, look how Gold Canyon maintains their own dinosaur park. They do that themselves. They don't pay anybody to do that, so.
Yeah, we certainly would want to look at all options.
Those would be other good topics, I think, for that focus group to talk about and look at the reality of some of the things. One of the challenges in a city is that while there are lots of volunteers doing lots of things in our community, they see the city as somebody who should be taking care of the amenity. Whereas in a community that built something, they tend to take, I think Royal Palm is a good example of, they contributed those trees, and now those neighbors want to see them prosper. And so they found ways to kind of volunteer. And I think we can find some of that for a dog park as well. It just won't be the mowing of the grass, like, some of the big stuff. And so we just definitely want to look at those. And I think we can get a little bit of balance of those things.
And you're right, if we put it on BLM land, we can't have the Westminster Dog Show come here.
That is true. And that is absolutely a reality of, unless we buy it, and that just adds more cost.
You know, I really think it's worth our while to look at the county retention basin. They've already got water there. They've already got lighting there. There's parking there. Some of this stuff is already there, so our, I think that even though it's somebody else's land, if we're mowing it, they'd be happy campers.
Right.
I mean, you know, that would be an interesting IGA situation.
Right.
So I think it's worth looking at and finding out. I know that some of the supervisors are pro it. Some say they are, but I am not at all sure that that's sincere, just the way I see it. But yeah, I think it'd be worth, it would be the least expensive of the options at this point.
And many students mentioned that, I'm sorry, as I just interrupted you. Many of the students mentioned that it might be a good trial. So like, to do something small that could happen in the, in a short term, while the bigger stuff was worked out, how to get water, how to get that land and those things. So again, that'd be a great discussion point of what could be done soon so that we could have something as we look for the next, the bigger project.
For instance, at one time, the softball fields were actually on one of the high school fields. And then as we built Prospector Park, we just shifted over there.
Right, absolutely.
The whole thing could shift.
Yes. Anything else for me?
So I'm hearing that we will bring it back at some point for council direction to staff and maybe talk about, flesh out some more, and then maybe look towards a small committee to give some advice to Liz as we go?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Who's next, Larry?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Heather Patel, Development Services. So, this topic was Understanding Homelessness in Our Community. We had two separate classes that did some work. The first class was the Socioeconomic Planning Class, and then we had our Public Affairs Capstone. The Socioeconomic Planning Class basically had the entire class contacting and reaching out to seven peer communities to look at what their successful strategies have been in dealing with this population and any of the issues that may arise as a result of it. They looked at federal programs, encouraging collaboration, getting the community more involved, identifying appropriate location for services, and educating the law enforcement. So, they came up with a huge list of recommendations. I'm very pleased to say that some of these we are already doing to some extent. Certainly, we could grow on them, but it's nice to see that we are in line with what other communities are doing. So, they looked, again, at being more people-centered, so essentially getting to know who the people are and providing individualized services to the population instead of just having one size fits all. Encouraging volunteerism, getting the community involved, sharing information and data within our area, within our county, having access to some funding, providing some services or affair to provide services for the population, reaching out to some existing organizations, and providing what's called navigation services, which is sort of one-on-one mentoring, for lack of a better word. Help people get to navigate different services so that they can get the help that they need, work with churches, and engage our law enforcement. The next class was the Public Affairs Capstone. And basically, what that was, was, I want to say there was eight students that all took a different topic, and then they wrote a paper on the topic. There were only three that were selected to be included in the packet that you received, and that was the professor's doing. That really had nothing to do with us. And those students looked at providing some different themes like shelter, transportation, collaboration, and public awareness. They came up with a bunch of recommendations as well, talking about transitional housing, finding landlords, encouraging landlords to rent to this population, provide incentives, provide transportation, looking at the city's policies, looking at, again, providing navigation services, prioritizing some employment opportunities, and decriminalizing homelessness and doing more of a public awareness campaign. So, like I said, we are doing a big amount of what the recommendations were from the students, so I just wanted to kind of highlight those. I handed out a sheet of paper that sort of lists what we have been doing. So, we are part of the Penal County Continuum of Care, which is a subset of the Balance of State Continuum of Care. So, basically HUD says the states have to provide a continuum of care to work with this population. And in Arizona, the Arizona Department of Housing manages the Balance of State, and then there's a Maricopa Continuum and a Pima County slash Tucson Continuum. So, the Balance of State is basically everybody else. And then, the state said to the counties that they want each county to have a smaller continuum and then basically work at the local level and then go up to the state with some information and recommendations. So, we, as a community, participate with Penal County's Continuum of Care, and it is a HUD requirement that there be a coordinated entry system, which basically means what they're calling like a no-wrong door. Anybody can go into any organization and receive care and services whether that organization provides that specific service, but they can do referrals. So, that is something that we have to work on more here. And then, we do have our committees. We have our Chronic Homeless Committee and our Empowerment Group. And we've done, we've created a Community Resource Center over at the Genesis Project Monday afternoons. And that is open to the public. You do not have to be homeless. It can be anybody who is needing help. There are different organizations that go there different times during the month, but it's always on Mondays. So, DES will go there, Social Security goes there, Legal Aid goes there. A lot of different programs are provided through that center. We have conducted two Project Connect events, so those are considered homeless fairs, for lack of a better term. And that just brings organizations all together in one spot on one-day event. We have a bike share program, which is sort of a referral process. If somebody goes into an organization and they don't have transportation to get to work or whatever, then they can be referred to The United Way, who has bikes. They have a whole program set up with the Boys and Girls Club, with the school district, and they get bikes, they fix them up, and they give them to people. We have also started this past December, a pastoral group with some churches. Not all churches are participating at this time, but that's something that's being worked on. And we do have or are trying to reach out to landlords in the area to encourage them to participate and rent to this population. Essentially, there is funding from the state to get people housed. And we, Cora is the recipient of those funds, Community Action Human Resource Agency. And they can't spend the money because they can't find landlords to rent to people. So, it's sort of like a campaign to go out and just talk to landlords and encourage them to participate. There are a lot of benefits. The Arizona Department of Housing has set up an incentive program for landlords who maybe have their property damaged as a result of being in this program. And so, then they can get reimbursed for getting damages repaired. Also, we have recently engaged a new nonprofit to come in and to help us further our Community Resource Center as well as our Navigation Services. And they do provide employment services as well. So, that's what we're doing. Taking the recommendations that the students put together and what we feel that we need in the community, we are definitely seeing that there is an increased need for, or an increasing demand on staff time for this. So, we want to sort of understand more of what our position is, what it is that the city wants to do as it relates to human services, and how we're going to take a role in this moving forward. Are we going to simply convene meetings, get people involved, or are we going to take an active role? And in doing so, some of these recommendations up here would require staff, would require extensive review of city policies, and getting a job program going, working with organizations, and things like that. So, I know that a lot of you have seen different communities like Tucson or Albuquerque that have a job program. We do have a program through our court system, but that's for paying off fines. That's not providing a wage. So, these types of things and programs and recommendations that could help us kind of move that needle, get some people, jobs off the streets, would require more of a commitment, I guess we should say. So, that is all I have for you this evening. Any questions?
Questions for Heather?
Wow. The kids did a marvelous job on this, didn't they?
Yeah, they sure did.
They really, really went in depth on each one of these areas. You know, and I think every one of these topics is an important issue for the city to look further into and to our process, like the decriminalization of the homeless. I mean, that does nothing but cost the city more money in the arrest process and everything. But what else has other cities done besides the arrest process? You know, so there's a lot in each one of these things that we can look at. I'd like to know if anybody else would like staff to look into the solid waste issue further as well.
Definitely.
That's been talked about multiple times.
Yeah, we have done that.
Well, there's actually one more quick. I promise it'll be quick. Do you want to talk about homelessness?
I have one comment I want to make on homeless.
I do also, yeah. We're jumping ahead.
Thank you, Heather and your group. I really appreciate it, and it's really great to know. This is a significant issue. Many states and major urban areas are really struggling with it. I wanted to bring to the community's attention that the Maricopa Association of Governments has recently started really working on this as a coordinated regional effort. The numbers of the point-in-time surveys of our region-wide homeless population is significantly increased, hundred percent type numbers. And it has many city managers across the region very concerned about what does this mean? And I think it's really interesting that MAG is a correlation of groups of cities and towns are working. It's like they had for transportation, air quality, land use planning, more recently, domestic violence issues. And now, they're looking at homelessness, the cost to society as these issues continue. And so, I just want to make everybody aware that that is going to be more of a topic at that level as we go. And it is interesting because as you look as a region as a whole, there are some areas that have more affordable housing than others. There are some areas in the region that have transit. There's some areas of the region that have employment, and there's other areas. And so, that's kind of the discussion that goes on at the region level. That's all.
And I'd like to encourage everybody to come to the, they're called the Mayor's Breakfast, but they're really not. They're really the United Way breakfast that Manny Bowler puts on, and there's a lot of info comes out of there. Even if you can't participate, just come listen, because all this has pretty much been discussed there, and that's where a lot of the plans are formed. So, I would encourage people to watch for that the next time it's up. And I think it's going to be, what, in the fall, October?
We do it every quarter or every six months, so, yeah, it will be September.
Yeah, so, everyone watch for that.
The fifth leg. Whoops, oh, sorry, sorry, got ahead of me. So, last class was really a landscape architecture class, and they dealt with trying to take the four projects we were talking about, folding them into some generalized land use planning. So, that's the class right there. Two professors, Ken Brooks and Kevin Kellogg. And so, this is just, I didn't, because this was the most voluminous, it's 467 pages. I didn't, to be honest with you, have a chance to look at barely the overall summary. But one of the things is that they were trying to create these overarching visions. Early on, Matt McNulty talked about tourism. What should be, if we're trying as a city looking forward, what is, they were kind of looking at it as community themes, if you will. But how do, this particular class was looking at the other four projects and trying to put them in the context of community planning. So, one of the things they thought was at this point was that they haven't seen some overall community vision or common vision for the community in terms of, is it tourism-oriented? Is it natural resource-based type of, what type of community do you want to be 20, 30 years from now? So, they explored different themes. They built these plans then around their various themes. So, again, tourism, recreation, culture and history, housing, healthy communities. Healthy community was more of not just particular housing, but how can we, as a community, foster neighborhoods and housing and community that's good for people of all ages? Forestry, resource conservation, and then mobility was built kind of around transit and how do people, are we a community that people? And some of these kind of are interwoven, overlap, et cetera. So, they talked about creating a future vision, so trying to create some overarching design. And again, what are the best practices out there in terms of, we've talked about this in the past with walkable communities, how development can be fair for all, sustainable? How do we reserve these natural areas, consider them assets instead of just paving them over? So, as a community, this community 20, 30, 50 years from now can be successful if we can have, measure it by community health, environmental preservation, economic prosperity, that those things are interrelated. You can't really just say, well, we're going to have a great economy, but kind of ignore the environment. And how do we connect to the adjacent community? So, they, their general findings were that, I think this is kind of in your vision and mission statements that you've talked about, the natural beauty, its location at a crossroads and a gateway, we have magnificent natural assets. But we also need to be careful, that we are still at a time with 40,000 people here, that we don't have to be like every place in the metro area, that we can have our own community identity. That's what these students have seen, that if we just do more of the same, we're going to have traffic congestion, air quality issues, lack of affordable housing. Let's not repeat the mistakes that some of these other communities. So, we have to be careful as we do long-range planning. So, essentially, the report is meant to stimulate thinking for this group, other groups that work on long-range planning is to think about, and I think this was a unique approach to planning, is that they came, student groups broke into four or five different groups and said, okay, how do we, what kind of future vision should the community kind of prepare itself for? Do we want to be known as an education community, for example, or a natural resource community? What are we trying to build ourselves as? So, I think the next step for this one particularly is there's a lot of good information. Most of it I haven't gone through yet, but I think there's a lot of it from all these reports. We do have to update the general plan. Are we going to, we have to do that in the next 30 months, if you will, and can we use this information to create even a much better plan for the community going forward? So, that's where I think a lot of this information, a lot of the themes in here, we've seen before from the Capstone project with Dr. Kim's class. I think we've seen it in the other reports. And so, I don't know if you want to spend a lot of time on that. I kind of want to talk about the projects that are currently happening, that we're going to do the same thing again in July or August. So, ASU will take, last night, there was a community-based theater at Flatiron Park where they told ghost stories. It was pretty cool to go around different parts of the park and tell these ghost stories. That was a Masters in Fine Arts class. There's an online class, and I think we're going to get you the link. You can do a survey. Basically, you can, it's places we care about in AJ. What are the places you care about? What does the community care about? And you can do this pin mapping exercise, and you can tell us what places are special to you from a historic perspective, what's currently important, so we will get you that link. That's an online class. This is a little different than other universities are doing. We're doing some online classes. So, folks could be all over the country, but they're developing these mapping tools. This one's called History in the Wild. We're also working, that I think ties in with the presentation just on the landscape architecture class, is when we do update our general plan going forward, there is a class looking at, you know, what are some tools that other cities have used as they update their general plans? And how can we plan for a community that is forward-thinking and sustainable? We're working with a graduate student on transitioning mobile home parks. We've kind of, you know, you could classify our mobile home parks, you know, the ones with the golf courses and all the amenities. And we also have mobile home RV parks that virtually have no amenities. And so, what can we do? How can we keep the housing affordable? But how do we do that in a way that makes those communities revamp those without perhaps relocating people? There's actually an article in the paper the other day that we forwarded about how Chicanos Por la Causa, they bought a mobile home park or they're working on buying a mobile home park and eliminating the mobile home park, but over time, creating affordable housing. So, hopefully, those folks don't have to move out, but they do get better housing going on. And finally, the last class we're working on is, we call it Exploring New Revenue Sources. We read every day in the paper about another brick-and-mortar store closing. We very heavily rely on sales tax in this community. The elimination of brick-and-mortar stores and people going to Amazon and buying everything is going to have a profound effect, it is having a profound effect on real estate and communities. And so, we have the same class, but a whole new crew of students working on, what should the city be thinking about in terms of where do we get our revenue and what's happening externally to us? And then, I just had this obs- And then, I just had this observation, uh, as I was sitting there, and I think Councilmember Evans touched on it, is that we picked these four topics, the previous ones, and even these here, is because you folks have been talking about them. They've come up in town hall meetings, they've come up at your retreats, they've come up, you know, by the public when they do a call to the public. Uh, they've come up in various forums. So, I think the idea was that these students weren't going to do these projects last and finish them up in December, and they'd never be heard from again, that we are presenting these to you. I think you are already talking about two items with direction to staff, which I think would really excite the students that maybe have already graduated. Their work, they're trying to get practical experience, they're trying to learn in these communities, and taking this work and applying what they're learning in school to real-life situations in communities. So, I think it's exciting that we're moving these projects ahead, because they are things that, uh, are sometimes going to be sticky wickets. But I think you just can't, uh, kick the can down the road on a, a lot of these issues. So, that's all I had, Your Honor. And if there's any other thoughts or...
Chip has some thoughts.
I, first off, I appreciate everything that they did in the aspect on it. And I was looking through this, uh, section on the land use and planning. And one of the things that came across to me, and of course, as you know, I'm from the equine portion of the community, and, and and underneath the, uh, Apache Junction community orientation, conditions and background, uh, I felt that they did not do a very informative, uh, looking at our, you know, some part of our community. Because one of the things that they had stated in here was road improvements. I mean, this, uh, minimal paved roads, the, that occur in the high-density areas, majority of the roads in the services are dirt. Um, and I looked at the area that they were looking at, any aspect on it, is from Broadway down to, uh, down south. They're talking about the landfills being on the, the southern side, and they're going all the way out past the city limits into the county. And in the county, I'll agree, there is a lot of dirt roads over in there. Um, but inside the city, we have, we still have some dirt roads, but not very many. And in this entire area that they're talking about, uh, the only other dirt roads that I know that's inside the city is also in the, the county island inside the city. So, I, I think that, you know, for us looking at this, we have to take into account sometimes that they did not do a very good, I'll say, looking at the area to determine what is the city, what is not. And they were talking about the, um, land use, disor- disorganized housing and land use, and they're talking in the large lot area. Were they talking about making us more into a development in the large lot area?
Chip, Chip, can we get your mic? We're losing you.
I'm sorry.
Our audio guys are wishing you were talking into the mic.
Oh, talking into the mic, I'm sorry. Um, I pushed it all the way up front so that no one could hear me.
Oh.
Uh, a- and tha- that's one of the things that, in this, that I saw that, that I'll say does concern me in the aspect on it, because the large lot in the horse community is a very active part of our community. And I, I think that was not necessarily taken in. They also talked about bicycle paths and walkable paths, but didn't even mention the equine at all. And I know we are.
Yeah.
And I know we're addressing it, but this section here, I felt was very lacking.
Again, I haven't, to be honest with you, gone through all those reports, because they all kind of came together at the end. That was a particular class that we didn't have, just schedules didn't combine. I think, uh, I want to say that, uh, maybe Nick and Liz went to one class, but we just couldn't get on this landscape architecture class to where we could spend a lot of time with them in particular. So, um, again, they are, um, the reports are what they are. And again, I think that we can certainly use the information as we go forward. We know here locally as well, how to incorporate some of those ideas.
Well, I think if we continue on and use this more, I think in the aspect of bringing them, in the aspect of telling them, hey, you know, this is, I'll say, some of the problems that, you know, we as a community see, and, uh, need to a- address it a little differently.
Sure, sure.
Anyone else?
Just a, a comment, I think, I think these are, these are good reports, but it's a lot of information in a very short period of time to try to read, let alone even digest it. So, uh, you know, if we take a couple of them and work through, maybe it's a solid waste in bike path, or the dog park, or something like that. I mean, this one's four hundred and sixty-one pages, it's going to take a while to get through that.
Sure, and I'm just suggesting that that's a lot of information, that a lot of that can feed into the general plan over the next thirty months. So, I'm not suggesting that we do anything with that four hundred and sixty-seven.
My comment is kind of for the council, that we don't take on the whole thing at one time.
Right, yeah, there's no urgency for you to just say, oh, we got to do something now on all of these. We're just presenting the information tonight, and then you folks decide, uh, how and when you want to proceed.
Thank you.
But it is a lot of information. And then, in August, we'll have some of these reports for these other classes we're working on right now.
I thought I might have to stop at a weigh station to get here.
Yeah, we had to kill quite a few trees there, we apologize for that.
We have a lot of solid waste.
Yes, we do.
A- and the thing is, I set it, uh, out this morning and tried to access it on my iPad, and it denied me access, I assume, because it's too big.
Oh, I got mine.
I got mine.
Um, I was over at the, uh, Greyhound facilities over there, and it kept...
Could have been their system, man.
Well...
Yeah, some of the file sizes, if you, if you just click on those reports, I think that one was about thirty megabytes or something, maybe more, to click on. If you go to the Legistar and you, the reports are in there, that's, again, color photographs, all that, it's a big document to download.
So, I would just say, as you go through those, and if you have something, keep, keep me posted, these, some of these have been going on for decades. And so, I want to keep it going, I, I do sense there is a takeaway of a couple items that we'll be bringing back, and I'll be working with you on the when to do that, and that's the solid waste, am I seeing that? To talk about some more, and then the dog park.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I, I would like to say that it, there's been a lot of work by a lot of people, I mean, not just ASU, but staff and everything else. And I, you know, it's great information, it's just trying to digest it all and, you know, tie it together. But I, I, I mean, I know it's been a lot of work, and a lot of good work, too. It's, it's, it isn't easy to do, so...
Thanks again, Larry. Presentation and discussion on Resolution Number Eighteen dash sixteen, authorizing the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona Department of Public Safety Chief regarding University of Phoenix Stadium, which is...
Mayor, City Council, Tom Kelly, Police Chief. I'll try to be really short. Um, this in its simplistic form is a, uh, IGA between the City of Apache Junction and the Police Department and the Arizona Department of Public Safety. For those events that would happen at the University of Phoenix in Glendale, like the Super Bowl, where DPS needed extra personnel for security and, um, police services, uh, DPS would enter into an agreement for our off-duty officers, and I emphasize off-duty officers, which they would be reimbursed for their hourly services when those events would arise. Um, this contract or IGA would be approved, should you approve it. Um, I think it expires in six years. Uh, that's their current contract with the University of Phoenix for the Glendale facility.
Who's reimbursing?
And that's basically what, pardon me?
Who's reimbursing us?
The DPS will be reimbursing the officer's payment, so, uh, we, the city would not be paying any...
Is that even a reimbursement?
Be a, or not, it'd be a, it'd actually be paid directly to the officer, so the city doesn't get involved in any retirements or medical things like that. It's simply an off-duty assignment that the officers would be called up.
But it said we have to cover their workers' comp, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, which, well, what does that consist of? Because it isn't workers' comp for when our officers are on duty in, in our city jobs, or did I read it wrong?
No, it says that each officer's home agency shall provide workers' comp coverage for a sign-off.
So, will that be an additional cost to us to have that?
If something happened.
If something happened, then the city would be responsible for that, officers. Similarly, like we're doing now, when we have off-duty assignments for whether they're doing road service or anything else. If a traffic accident occurred and they got hurt, uh, the city would, even an off-duty status would be on the workman's comp.
But they're working in the city.
Some are, and some of those off-duty assignments are off-site.
In the county.
In the county and elsewhere throughout the metro area.
But as long as they're being directed, because in essence, they're not employed by the city. Under this scenario, they're employed by DPS, but we are authorizing them to do it, so our workers' comp would cover it. And we don't have to pay an additional addendum or an umbrella policy or something like that.
I probably have to defer some of that to the attorney side of it, because I think if you looked at it, and maybe Joel would argue that once for the officers representing the city, even though they're working for DPS, then an argument could be that it would be a dual-type responsibility if a lawsuit came down, or whether it was DPS's responsibility or a city's. But, um, the way the contract, or the agreement is written, that the city would assume the workman's compensation for the officer.
Then just, I have just a clarification, can the officers, I mean, I, maybe I'm, I have, um, officers that work in other cities go and do private security jobs in, you know, they, they rent themselves out for, uh, events and that type of stuff. So, if we sign this agreement, does this mean that our officers can't go off and do that themselves? Or how does, or, or, or do, does the DPS only employ, um, officers from other entities under these IGAs? I guess, what's stopping our officers from just doing this on their own, I guess?
The contract with the University of Phoenix Stadium is with Arizona Department of Public Safety, and it's for sworn AZ Post-certified police officers to perform law enforcement duties.
Yeah.
So, that's, that'd be difference between that and, say, an officer working at a place as a security officer. Um, but th- this contract is solely, and they work under the direction of DPS when they would be hired, or contracted out.
Anything else?
The only thing I might ask from Joel or Chi- Chief, I'm, is, one, Chief, are we going to monitor our own tracking system for our work policy so that we don't ever get in a situation? Because I remember back in the Baraka Report, we had red flag kind of situation, where we want to make sure our officers didn't overwork. So, in other words, you get in a situation where you work, and I think this is going to be intermittent. I think this is for Final Four, Super Bowl, I don't think there's a lot. But do we monitor that? And then Joel, is a certified police officer, let's say they're acting in their role, they're, they're somewhere, and they, something happens as, um, they're down at, down at the restaurant, and they're with their family, and something starts to happen, and they interact, and they get hurt. I think our workers' comp kicks in no matter what, but maybe that's two different questions for you guys.
Uh, workers' comp does kick in in that case. Uh, there was a change in the law, oh, I don't know how many years ago, because some event happened, I think on a joint task force, and agencies started suing each other because of an event involving defendants. And so, they, I guess the legislature decided, uh, each individual agency had to cover their own workers' comp. And that did, believe me, I wanted to change some of this wording, but I was not allowed to by a certain sworn officer, so... But this is a, this is a, this IGA authorizes, or I'm sorry, the resolution authorizes the IGA. And it's good to be part of the inter-agency connection in the valley, especially during the big events. And they do want sworn peace officers, not just private security guards. And also, there's, there might be security events where some very important dignitaries may come to town, and so, they want, that's why they want peace officers rather than sw- than, um, private security individuals.
The second part of the question that was raised is, a couple of things we're doing, this is one of the conversations they had with command staff, that we would actually have to make sure that the monitoring of the officer's on-duty, off-duty time was strictly monitored, so we didn't incur an officer that would be getting off his ten-hour shift or twelve-hour shift, and then going directly to the situ- and then this is one of those situations with DPS, and especially, specifically at the Glendale Stadium, that we are rare occasion, and be for those bigger events, where we're looking for force multipliers. And we have had a great relationship with DPS, where they've come in our city and worked with us on joint operations, and continue to do that. And like the, uh, city attorney said, it, it does help build a liaison and camaraderie between the agency. But this is going to be kind of a rare event, it wouldn't be something that would be monthly, weekly, or anything like that. I, I picture it as the rare occasion where we have a Super Bowl, and they need officers, they're going to, they've asked us to participate in it, so... But the monitoring of the, uh, officer's hours, we strictly monitor by the Patrol Division and the CID Division commanders. And you had a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, uh, and I'm assuming something here, just one clarification, that the, uh, workman's comp is going to be, actually, it's, it's one, one fee for the workman's comp, it's not because they're doing this in addition, it costs us more?
As far as I know, there's no additional fees, uh, other than what the city already pays.
Right.
And again, this is one of those, on those rare occasions where it would be a, a special event.
We can triple-check that, but we're, at this point, probably no premium change. What will change is our behavior, or, and/or if something happens, it's like...
Well, and that was my question, if something tragic happened to an officer, is the city set up for, um, additional lawsuits? Because he was our employee acting outside of the city?
Well, we do have a risk pool that handles any torts, and so, if something happens, I'm sure everybody gets sued, that's usually what happens. And then, it's up to the insurance companies, uh, to work it out. But we do have coverage for, um, actions by police officers.
Okay.
And this is on consent agenda for tomorrow?
Correct.
Anything else? Thank you. Discussion on Date, Time, and Location for Budget Work Session, Public Hearing and Adoption of Tentative and Final Budget for Fiscal Year Eighteen Nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll take this one, and I'll be brief. Before you, on our budget calendar, you have dates, um, listed. This will be on your selection of meeting dates, times, and locations agenda item tomorrow night. Um, I'm available for any questions.
It's a really exciting item.
If you'd like to change those dates, but those are all Monday nights, starting with April thirtieth. You'll see your first public work session for the budget, which is also, um, the first public introduction of, of the city manager proposed, proposed budget. And then, you'll see on May fourteenth, also Monday night, tentative budget adoption after a public hearing. And then, we go through the mandated, um, publishing requirements by state law for a final adoption date of June eighteenth.
And I'd like to consider changing the budget work session to May seventh, mainly because we have to have time to read that budget before we have a work session, and the thirtieth is just two weeks.
Um, there, so, April thirtieth would be your regular night for a Monday night work session.
And the seventh would also be a regular night.
This, the fourteenth would be your next regular night.
Oh, I see, we're not going to have a session on the first, okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay.
All the meeting days are based on the Tuesday night meetings, yeah. So, it's the, the work sessions are based on the Monday night before the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday.
Okay, well, then I guess I better read back.
And I'd be curious to see if, uh...
We need to set up our, our, our council.
So, Jill, from our office, will be contacting you for, for those meetings.
And I'll be curious to see if Parks and Recreation doesn't have six hundred and fifty thousand dollars laying around, extra.
Right.
They claim they don't, but...
I'll bet you you're hiding it, Liz. Been hiding it from me for twenty years, haven't you?
Anything else tonight?
So, are we supposed to read this first, or the budget?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would suggest the budget.
I suggest to read that budget first.
Let's get it straight, let's get all the pages up there, all of it.
Okay, I think we're finished for tonight, so we'll be adjourned until tomorrow.